All right, let's call to order the work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Today's Tuesday, June 10th. We're meeting in the supervisors' hearing room in Melody Lane in Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board will attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff conform and discuss agenda items with the board of supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. We will do a roll call. District one.
Let's begin, sir.
District two.
Gomez is here.
And District three, Antonori is here. All supervisors present and in person. Today, we will begin a discussion regarding public works, and Mr. Fosseal is here to provide us the overview. Mr. Fosseal, it's all you. Do you want to say something, Mr. Gomez? I'm sorry.
Are you fine? Just pick up the conversation. There might be some slide moving from your packets. So just pay attention to the screen than to Mr. Fosseal.
Oh, okay.
You're all.
Different presentations?
No, I think we're missing.
But we'll worry.
Yeah. All right, all right, all right, cool. So, sir, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here to do a quarterly update for the Public Works Department. What I'd like to do is start with fleet. It's a fleet update.
Okay.
Um, we did add a couple of things since the PowerPoint was turned in. Two solid waste trucks were delivered that were ordered this past year. On this PowerPoint, it shows that the replacement vehicles, we had 17 out of the 18, and we did receive all of them since this PowerPoint was turned in. So we have all of the vehicles received for this FY, and we're projected to have to order 19 for the next FY. Upfits for the vehicles that we have, we've done 16 vehicles in-house, and we've outsourced five. Those are contracted to a company up in Tucson. We just completed an auction. At the auction, we had 24 vehicles listed. We put, basically, we put a minimum price on them of the blue book. All of them but one sold. We sold 23 out of the 24 vehicles.
Who was the one that did sell, if you don't?
So actually, we sold 24, but one of them backed out on payment. I don't know why that is. Whether funds, for some reason, didn't clear, whatever, I don't know. But all of the 23 are actually picked up too. So they're picked up, paid for, and gone. So we did keep enough vehicles behind to do another auction and split it up just a little bit. We plan on doing the same thing and putting a reserve, just like we did this time, and keep it fairly close to the book so that we make sure we're getting what we should be getting out of those vehicles. So, but that auction is completed and done. Budgeted replacement for the equipment in the new FY for heavy fleet, the solid waste side, we're budgeting for a walking floor. We have budgeted for a scraper engine for the front engine. We did a rear engine this past year. The front engine's probably not too far behind, so we went ahead and budgeted for that. We talked about in our previous work session how we push out the life of our heavy equipment. We don't just replace that at a given hour. We push out that because of the cost of that equipment. So we can really utilize that equipment for a lot longer and keep costs down by basically doing a midlife or rejuvenating, in this case, an engine or something like that. This piece of equipment that we're buying an engine for is, right now, is probably a $1.1 million piece of equipment. To buy an engine for, we're looking at probably somewhere around the $200,000 mark. So much, much cheaper, and we'll get another 5,000 hours, maybe more out of it. So that's kind of our goal.
This one used at the waste facility.
At the landfill, yep.
Is this in Chico City or?
And what's?
Tucson?
So also, we have a high-side trailer. I mentioned this in the previous work session too. But this high-side trailer is for recycling. So all the metal that we take up to Tucson, metal's going back up just a little bit. Our superintendent in solid waste is really anxious to get that material moved to Tucson. So we budgeted to do a high-side trailer because currently, we're using roll-off cans. And that takes a lot of time for the driver to go up to Tucson and unhook his trailer, and then go dump a can, and then go pick up a can and go dump it, and then re-hook, and all of these things. So it takes us about twice as long. So we think we'll be able to move about twice the material and a lot safer.
So that high-side trailer is a dumper?
Yes, it's an end-dump trailer. Big, long one. I think we're looking at like a 42-foot, something like that.
And what kind of, are you getting a good return on your investment or a good return for taking the metal up to Tucson?
Yeah, so basically, we're already collecting the 64-ton at the gate. So we take the metal up to Tucson, and we'll go into the solid waste budget just a little bit, and I'll explain some of the recycling part of this. But yeah, we're getting really good money. It's a good thing that we're recycling currently because it's actually offsetting some of the costs to keep that tipping fee down at $64 a ton. Um, the transport truck that we have budgeted, that's for solid waste as well. We've also budgeted for an end-frame. An end-frame is an engine that gets built inside of the truck. So basically, we take an engine that, or a truck that's got real high mileage and it's time for an overhaul. And again, heavy equipment, cheaper to fix most of the time. So we take that truck up to Tucson, and they rebuild the engine while it's in the frame. So an end-frame's typically a lot cheaper than replacing everything, pulling the engine out, sending it to Tucson at some point.
What does that entail?
It's all new rotating parts inside, basically, new pistons and rings and bearings and things like that. So it gives us another, you know, 300,000 miles, maybe more, depending. We take pretty good care of our equipment, so we can push the mileage out pretty far. And we don't usually do an end-frame unless the truck is in pretty decent shape physically. So the body's probably in pretty good shape, and it's just painful to get rid of a truck that costs that much. We can put an engine in for a third the cost and get another life out of it. So that's where we're at with the end-frame. We did an end-frame on a roll-off truck that's currently up there, but it's looking like it's possible they won't be able to get us parts for that one. So we're looking at possibly trading that truck in and buying another roll-off truck instead. It'll turn into a trade-in type of thing. I don't know what's going to happen with that yet. We're still waiting on some answers. And then we did budget for another roll-off truck, and that's in the solid waste side. So on the highway side of heavy equipment, we've budgeted for a chip spreader. That obviously is what goes out and chip seals all of our roads, super important piece of equipment. If we do that, we would sell another one that we have currently. We have two. We have a backup chip spreader.
And what's the dollar amount threshold you can go through? I think you said that up to a certain amount, we do it ourselves, and if it's above a certain amount, we have to go out?
So if we're reconstructing a road or something, or we're building a building, we have restrictions on how much we can spend. Currently, like, we're out there reconstructing a road. We talked about Kansas Settlements and so on. So if we're reconstructing or building a new road, we can't exceed, it's like 285, I think it is. It's 285,000. Then it has to go out, either go state contract or bid. Either way, we can't do it in-house any longer. It goes outside of that. On the maintenance side of things, we can spend more money than that, but it's maintaining what we already have, so.
Mr. Fosseal, can you refresh my memory about what you said about the county obtaining a planer or whatever you call the device that grinds asphalt?
A milling, yeah. So we bought a hammer mill that attached to the front of our skid steer. I think that was last year sometime. It just does potholes and things like that. It's not real big. But we do have that, and the guys have used it a few times, and it saves a lot of time.
What about getting a planer, which I understand is a million dollars? Is it worth the county's time? Or put that on the back burner?
You're talking about some large-scale milling?
Yeah, milling machines that chew up.
The counties, you know, I don't know the percentage of chip-sealed roads, probably 80, 90% is chip-sealed. So you would not use a planer on a chip-sealed road. It's for asphalt. That's more for ADOT. That might be a better question for Jackie.
That's fine.
Yeah. All right, so the other thing we have on there is a road grader. Typically, that's something that once a year we budget for. We have one that gets a lot of hours on it. Usually, that one gets pushed out for trade-in or something, and then we replace that machine. Some of the machines do get rehabbed. In this case, it would be a replacement. And the other thing that we have on there is a dump truck. One of the reasons we put a dump truck on there is because some of the dump trucks, we don't really have one that's totally worn out, but we've gone to these super dumps that haul a lot more materials, so they're more efficient. And so we wanted to make sure it was on there in case we go out and we start maintaining a lot more roads. We have it in the budget to buy that truck. And also, we do have a couple of trucks that have been given us some bits. So if we do happen to have a truck that goes down, we have earmarks and money to replace that vehicle. If for some reason it fails, we can continue on with our job without it hindering us too much. So we kind of touched on, they picked up the vehicles, walking floor. The second new truck for solid waste arrives tomorrow, and we'll have both solid waste trucks that we ordered this fiscal year. That covers everything in fleet. Do you guys have any questions about light and heavy fleet?
I'm glad to see that every time we talk to you, you're always talking about fixing what you got, for the most part.
Okay.
Trying to get the most out of everything. I appreciate that. Sure.
You guys could PowerPoint there. So we'll jump into the highways update. Before I go into this, there was something I wanted to mention. We're currently working on an adopt-a-highway program. The adopt-a-highway program would be basically something along the lines that ADOT has, and it's where residents can adopt a mile or two miles of road, and they can do a cleanup program on that stretch of highway. And potentially, we would make a sign that says, you know, "The Fosseal family is doing this section of highway" or something of that nature. And that way, it gets their name out there a little bit. They're taking care of it. I think it promotes pride in the county and so forth. That is a program that we'll bring you guys for approval at some point. I want to make sure that we push it through administration and also our attorneys before we get too carried away with it, but.
And then you go and you pick up the trash, right? You give them the bags if you have anything on the side of the road?
Yeah, and currently, we have a couple of programs that kind of do that. But it's more residents coming in and asking us for bags, and they want to clean up portal, or they want to clean up two miles on Casabell. There's no formal way of them doing that where we're giving them bags and things. So it's just kind of formalizing some of what we do, and I'm hoping it kind of triggers more residents to want to do those things. All right. Going into the work plan, this is our fourth quarter work plan. We can run through each one of these, the Bisbee, Douglas, Benson, and Wilcox road yards, but typically, you'll look and see those, that red and green bar is our right-of-way mowing and our maintenance blading. That pretty much happens all year round. We're cleaning, you know, sight distance and things like that. That's why those stripes take up that entire quarter. Most of the time, that's what will be the norm. If you look at the April, there, you'll see the chip seal Coronado National, or the chip seal at Coronado Memorial. We don't have fog sealing on this chart, but I do believe it was fog sealed. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think everything that's on here that was chip sealed is fog sealed by now. We chip sealed North Mosen Road. It got fogged as well. We chip sealed Ramsey, chip sealed Palominas, chip sealed Purdy Lane in Bisbee Junction. This is all things that were done before June. We've been out there striping, our striping line here in Bisbee, I see it falls a little short of June. We had a striper truck issue where the striper went down. So we're still kind of spotty on that. We're still on striping, and we will be for some time still. Central Highway in Double Adobe here, we had a bridge issue. The state did an inspection on the bridge and let Jackie's department, or division in mind, know that there was a failure out there. So engineering got with our team, and we went out there and made those repairs. And that was done at the beginning of this last quarter. We did a bunch of hot mix on Central Highway, getting some failures fixed there. We chip sealed Hopkins Road, Whitewater School Road, and Bell Road in El Frida, along with Martinew, Webb, and Thompson in Cortland. I think the guys are actually done striping out there as well. They are, right?
Yep.
We just recently striped, I think yesterday, we striped Central too. Central was getting a little bit faded, so we went back out and hit that again.
How many stripe trucks do you have there?
We have two striper trucks. I think you were on the board when we were able to purchase the last one, and we were going to sell the one we don't like. But what's happened is we've had one break, and then we use the other one, and then it breaks, and then we wind up putting the other one into service. So we're getting striping done quicker because we have that backup machine, but we haven't relinquished that other stripe resistance.
Does that truck lay down that whatever, plastic striping? Is that what it does, or is it paint?
Ours is paint and beads. So it has reflective glass beads that goes in the paint.
Okay.
And it leaves a really thick layer of paint. There's a speck on that, so, yeah.
It's not the one that does the heat melting into the asphalt, but whatever?
Again, maintenance blading and mowing here. We chip sealed, or I'm sorry, we prepped sun sites. So Sun Sites currently has completely been prepped by Arcreeze. We contracted with Sunland Asphalt to go out and chip seal all that area. They're still currently working on it. The chip seal's going really good. That'll be all fogged up and stuff when they're done too. Once they're done with that, they'll jump over to Bell Ranch Road and Sheldon Road. And so the contractors are doing those two projects while we're out doing J6, Joseph Clark, and Crazy Woman you see on the list here, Apache Powder, the Dragoon Town Site. I believe we're hitting that this week, actually, and Ironwood Road. See, we're still hauling chip for Wilcox. That project is for our Kansas Settlement project, which is what we have slated for after July, and we'll be fogging that as well. But it takes a lot of material to get that road double chip sealed, which is what we're planning on doing to kind of bandage that road. It's got a lot of heavy truck traffic on it. And no matter what we do with that road, we're going to have to maintain what we have to make it last long enough for us to go back in and asphalt it. Ideally, you know, engineering and I both agree that that road should be asphalted at some point in time because of the heavy traffic, but it's not in our budget currently to do that. So that's something that we will just have to keep plugging away, either savings or whatever. We did put 1.5 million in Jackie's budget for Kansas Settlement that I think is going to be saved. And then there's a couple million in contingency that, you know, so we're hoping that would kind of go towards that project at some point in time. So the next slide there shows future projects, kind of tying into what I was just talking about. Kansas Settlement is slated for a double chip seal starting July. The first thing that we have to do after July is finish hot mixing. Fred and his crew is going to have to go out there this next week, and they have to put down about a quarter of a million dollars with a hot mix on the north end of Kansas Settlement just to keep that road together for the big trucks that are crossing it. So there's going to be quite a bit of hot mix done on that road before the end of this year. And then we'll probably have to put a little more money into it at the beginning of next year before we can put the chip seal down. But the plan is right now to double chip seal that road. It's 20 miles long. And the Dragoon project here, I have Dragoon. It says it's contracted through Sunland. That contract has not been approved yet. That was something that we had considered doing. It may go to bid. We're not completely sure if someone's going to be the ones doing it at this point, but it is in our plans to go ahead and chip seal that road and have them, whoever chip seals that road, do a crack film and chip it.
Are they supervisor? Sunland?
Sunland's out of Tucson, I believe, or is it in Tucson? So it may go to bid. It's not important to me who does it. I want it to go out to bid, and we'll see who gets the bid on it is what we're planning. It's important for me to mention to you the road that we're planning on doing. So that covers highways. Does anybody have any questions about highways?
No, well, this is kind of, the asphalt at Douglas is spot, right? Do you know if that's a quality issue in using them, or is it just like generic? Or do you know what the asphalt is going to be like coming out of there?
So I know that they had recently started an asphalt plant.
Yeah, I think it's going to be like ready to roll in a month or two.
In a month or two? What would have to happen if we use any of their material was, we would get a hold of engineering. Jackie's work group would go and look and see what kind of materials they're using and that kind of thing. We would have to make sure they meet a certain spec, which they probably will.
Well, it might be good to give them some guidance on it, because I know they're looking at maybe opportunity in the county using their asphalt plant. Just maybe to meet with them and say, well, this is what we need to minimally have for this road. I'm not sure that they, I mean, I'm sure they have an idea, but I think it would be beneficial to them to know what the county is looking for.
Okay.
You know, in some, if you could speak to them, that would be great.
I think Jackie and I can get together and decide who's going to make contact with them and just kind of make a plan going forward. Because I'm totally open to using hot mix out of the Douglas plant if it meets spec.
Right.
Mainly because it's all about transportation. Trucking costs are through the roof. And anytime we can logistically just make it make sense and make it make sense money-wise, I'm on board. You know, we need to make sure we're doing that.
And you know, let us, let me know if you have any pushback. The mayor is very, he just wants to know what he needs to do to be able to meet the qualifications so that they can get it going.
Right.
He's very open to any suggestions and all that kind of stuff. And if you get any pushback, just let me know, and then maybe the mayor could be part of that meeting or just comment. Because he's really adamant about wanting to try to get this working in the county.
So the city, I assume the city's going to be doing a lot of asphalt work, though.
The counties are pretty bad.
The county doesn't do asphalt work. So the only asphalt that we would be buying from them would be for like what the highways crew is currently doing on Kansas Settlement, which logistically, Douglas would be closer to us to do that job.
Right.
So it would make sense for us to use them for this, and like I said, it's going to be around a quarter of a million dollars, I think. Yeah, by the end of this month.
So that would be good for them to know what they need to do to maybe be able to provide that.
Yeah.
So, and sometimes that just helps, you know, but.
But it is patchy. We're not building roads with it, really. We're just using it to bandage things in a lot of cases.
Start a conversation, you know, and so anything would be a positive step.
For sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you brief us what the difference is between one kind of asphalt and another in as far as quality and the research that somebody would have to do to make sure that it isn't going to melt after trucks go over it and make ruts and stuff like that, so?
Yeah, so my specialty is more chip seal. That would probably be a good question for Jackie. I know that asphalt has, you know, they have to meet a certain criteria. The chip that's in the asphalt has to meet a criteria, the oil, you know, the emulsion that's in there and so forth.
Right.
I don't know those exact specs. I'm stuck more on the chip seal portion of it because that's what, we're in the maintenance side of things, where the asphalt's typically construction. Now Jackie's crew will look at like asphalt once in a while to make sure it's high enough quality for us to put on our roads. But typically, asphalt is, it's stronger than chip seal, so. But that would probably be a good question for Jackie.
All for Jackie.
Yeah, and it could be that, I know we have another work session planned in a month or so.
Right.
And we could gather some more information on stuff like that. Like, I'll look into it too, and I'm sure Jackie will. We'll give you some answers.
You want to make something that's going to last as much as you can, you know, keep up with your philosophy. And then you tell what's not going to last.
Right, well, I'm with you, for sure. So we get on highways?
Yep.
All right, and moving on to solid waste. Typically, what we do at quarterly work session is just give kind of an overview of the financials. Our tons weighed and charged for the last year are very similar to the previous year. We're actually up just a little bit. Last year, this time, we were at 5.131 million. This year, we're at 5.213. We had a little bit of vacancy savings on our payroll. That's where the savings is over last year. Fuel's down a little bit, so it's lower than our operations and maintenance last year too. So we're in the black just a little bit more than we were last year. We're at 82,471 from April to April. So we're still positive cash flow, 82,000. One of the questions that you had asked was about the metal. So just to give you kind of an idea, our expenses per ton is $76. We're charging $64 a ton at the gate. So we offset that cost by hauling that metal up to Tucson. So buying that trailer and stuff is almost completely necessary because we have to get that metal hauled to Tucson. If we didn't haul metal and recycle and rent our cans the way we do, our tipping fee would probably have to be somewhere around $76 a ton. So by our solid waste superintendent and all of his people over there and their efforts in recycling, you know, we have that $76 a ton expense. We're still maintaining at 64. So we're offsetting that by making revenue in other ways. We're very creative with that. So we're going to continue doing that and hold that $64 tipping fee just as long as we can. We talked about what EDQ had done to us this past year, and that was basically when they had given us a bunch of extra fees that we're not used to. They increased fees that were currently, you know, in existence, and they also created new fees. Well, in the ninth inning, this was just Sunday, I got an email from EDQ. They totally removed all the new fees. They did not remove the increases on the existing fees, though. So there's still an increase. It's just not as bad as it was. It looks like there's going to be about a $25,000 savings this year from what we anticipated, which is not a lot, but it is a little bit of a savings. And that said, we're still looking at seeing where the dust settles before we look at trying to adjust our tipping fee based on what they're doing. Because in the email, basically, it stated that they were going to remove those new fees, that they were kind of sticking to the ones that they increased based on the, what was it, CPI, thank you. Based on the CPI. So what's going to happen is they're going to go back and then look at those new fees, and they're probably going to try to get those fees in place. They may not be as high as they were, but they're probably going to do it in a different fashion. It may be a vote. It may be the governor that's involved or whatever. I'm not sure. I just got this information Sunday, so I'm kind of digesting it still to figure out what's going on there. But they didn't leave out in that email that they would put these fees back into place at some point in time. They just said for now, they're suspended completely, other than those increases. Which the increases are substantial still. We were paying 25 cents a ton to landfill our own trash, and now we're going to be charged 58 cents a ton to landfill our own trash. That fee already existed. They just increased it based on that, that, thank you, CPI. So I don't know. It's one of those things where it helped us. We were kind of excited to see it, but we'll see what happens in the future. With EDQ backing off on that, though, we're pretty solid on the tipping fee, I think, right now. We're not going to have to do anything. The next slide, you're going to really appreciate.
Yeah, because that was there before you get all this. It was a mess at the Douglas Station.
Yeah, so one of the things at the Douglas Station is we changed the leadership there a little bit. And then we had a contractor come in and do the repairs on the station. I want to make sure I mention here, this station is open. This is on a Monday that these photos were taken, and they had trash there. But this is what the site looks like right now. So I don't, I know you have seen it.
I've, yeah.
And this is like night and day.
Oh, I was like, wow, wouldn't they, it's like, it looks like all.
It's like a doctor photo.
So I was like, boy.
Yeah, we flipped it around. That station's doing extremely well with the leadership that's there now. And it looks great with the contractors going in and replacing the doors and reskinning the building up 10 feet.
Just the trash that doesn't blow away, you know, I mean, that was, you know, a big issue. But, so I'll have to come and visit it. That, when you put the trash in and you know that thing that, boy, that gets that compactor, right? Was that needed repair, or is that working okay?
They're working okay. One of the things that we constantly find ourselves battling is the walking floor and the compactor.
Yeah.
The compactor, when it goes down, it creates a real bottleneck because the walking floor kind of feeds the compactor. But if it fails, we can dump straight into the compactor and kind of bypass the system a little bit and keep moving trash. We had a failure today in Benson where the compactor went down. Facility wasn't able to get it up and running today, so it's going to be down for a whole day. What that'll do is that'll leave about, you know, 100 tons of trash on the floor. We have to reroute all the city drivers and all these kinds of things. When that compactor fails, it does happen. Asian, it can be a blown hose. It can be some electrical failure, which is what it was today, that we don't happen to have the components on hand to fix. So it just depends. The compactors, Joe and his crew and fleet have done a really good job refabricating blades, and they actually went through the entire county, fabricating each transfer station's blades until we had all new blades. I believe they're all replaced now, right? All but one, and that's Bisbee? Okay, so Bisbee Station's our slowest station. Doesn't surprise me. That's probably the last one because it gets way less trash than the rest of the county. So that one we save for last. But basically, we went through and we replaced all the hydraulic cylinders and that blade, so we'd have less failures. We're also looking into a company right now that can revamp the entire electrical system on those so we can have a new automatic running again. We found one when I went to my conference in Vegas, and this company is confident that they can fix us up and get us running again on automatic. And it's been years since we've been able to do that, so it's. Years since we've been able to do that, so it's. My fingers are crossed we can get this done and hopefully it won't cost too much. So in the, in the station there, there's a panel. Where the guys have to either hold the switch forward or back on manual. Or they can hit auto and it'll do eight jogs automatically, so they can go out and run, jump in the loader and start putting trash in. Instead of having our labor stand there and hold the switch. And so being able to use that auto is gonna cut down labor costs tremendously. And it'll give uh uh opportunity for that person to go out and pick up wind blown litter and things like that rather than hold the switch. So there's a lot of advantages to having that automatic working.
Is there any safety disadvantage?
To the auto?
Yeah.
As long as you don't fall in.
As long as you don't fall in, yeah. There's emergency stop switches, so if somebody does fall in, you can hit the button or whatever. Um but yeah, that is kind of a safety thing, I guess, if it was running on auto and something happened. But those stations are designed to run on automatic. It's just something that. Over the years, uh in fact, years ago, I used to fix the circuit boards inside myself. And the circuit boards, all the components on them have become obsolete, so they can't be fixed anymore. We sent them down to Mexico a couple of times and had a guy down there fix them and then he couldn't get the parts anymore and it just wound up. Really difficult to get these things up and running.
So I'm not done. Again, it looks so nice.
Yeah. Super excited that the station looks that good and and that the, you know, I mean, the contractor did a great job. It was sixty thousand. One of the things I I wouldn't mind mentioning here is that, you know, facilities has offered to go out and. Do the repairs on the other stations. They're gonna try to. We're gonna be on the hook for the materials. It's very minimal when it comes to what we're looking at, so we're gonna see how that works. Give them an opportunity to fix some of our stations. Darryl really stepped up to help us out there, so I'm hoping that works out. Alright, the next slide is about free dump day. We are looking at modifying the current free dump day program to reduce uh cost to the county and kind of streamline the program. However, the R A B uh did vote to get the free dump day program rolling. They, we would like to start it right after July. Just get it going. It uh it's a program that typically was running every other year and we want to streamline it and try to get it done every year.
Is it offered once a year? The free dump day or?
It ideally, it was supposed to be once a year, but because of the way the program's currently running. All the data happened to be unentered and everything else. It pushes it out to where it's actually being done every two years. So we're hoping that this new streamlining will make it to where we can do it once a year. Um it'll also create an environment where the public's more engaged with the solid waste state, you know, system and that kind of thing.
Right.
So we're looking at doing that, but however, the R A B did already vote to approve the free dump day for this next year. So unless you guys have an issue with it, we'll have uh Jessica start rolling with the free dump day program. It'll still be done the same way we've previously done it with the vouchers. But we were thinking about putting on that voucher that there will be some changes coming with the free dump system, you know, the free dump program. And that way it's kind of advertised right out of the gate with the people that are currently using it. And then we'll throw it on uh Facebook and probably on the Public Works website and so forth. We'll get it advertised as much as possible. So people know there's a change coming cuz ideally what we want to happen, and this still hasn't been approved through administration. We've had some talks about it, but. You know, it basically be where somebody comes into the transfer station and gets an application for it or they can do it online or they can call a number and things like that. And it'll reduce all of those uh postage issues we have. Buying the cards for twenty thousand dollars and all these other things and, you know, we get half of them returned to us, so there's. There is an issue there. We know, we know we need to work through something. We don't have a perfect system yet. Joe and our team have been working together on something to present to you guys.
Yeah.
Uh Mr. Scott. Uh do they, do the cards or the vouchers, do they expire?
They do, so when they're mailed out. They expire one year from the date of the postage, the post stamp. And if we do it internally, we wouldn't be mailing anything, I don't think. I think the way we're trying to do this is streamline it where we're not mailing out a bunch of stuff. It just goes right to the transfer station. And they can pick what station they go to and they just go there and. The fee attendant will already have the information. They can just punch it in and it's done. It might reduce a little bit of potentially some fraud. We have had some fake dump, dump day cards out there, things like that too, so.
Yeah.
Dump cards. So I'm, I'm sorry, and I U, it says, I, I U B T?
R R E B, so it's the Rate Review Advisory Board.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
So that's a consortium, so so it's all the city managers are on that.
Okay.
And they, they basically vote, yeah, that's the chairman. So they basically vote to have the free dump day. Uh or whatever. They they're involved very heavily in our solid waste system, so whenever we have a change or we, and we also update them. On every free dump day or every solid waste change and we go over our financials with them and all kinds of stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah. So that pie chart just kind of shows you uh the vouchers that were redeemed at the urban transfer stations. The next slide is the vouchers that were mailed. And the vouchers that were returned by the USPS. And the reason we have year two, three and four and we don't have the first year, the first year was a pilot program. They had different, uh different tonnage and all kinds of stuff, so the information won't. It it wouldn't. Work right on a, on a chart, so we wanted to leave that out, so this is year two, three and four. The following one is just the vouchers that are redeemed. So. This doesn't include that again from the first year. We did the program when it was one ton. It's now half ton.
I think the big change that I wanna focus on is vouchers mailed last year was forty two thousand nine hundred. But then you only see eleven thousand redeemed, so there's a big chunk of. Of vouchers that were mailed that we expensed to mail, so on and so forth, that no, nothing gets used, so that's why we're trying to make a change to. Eliminate that.
And what's interesting is we use the treasurer's office to get all the, all the information and they do a really good job of getting this information, but there is. There is places in there where we found the issues, where somebody that does or should have gotten one, didn't receive one. And then so we wind up uh giving them another voucher, which we can't reprint, so we just. Use a voucher that's been redeemed. We take it to the station and make sure that they're able to do their dump. I think that's it. If you guys have any questions? The free dump day program is very interesting. It's changed. It's evolved over the years. We used to have lines of traffic at each transfer station for a day and. It wound up being a traffic hazard. In Douglas.
Yeah.
It was really bad.
Yeah, I know, I heard of it.
Yeah, so I mean, it's something that we've tried to evolve and. Perfected over the years. I think that we'll come up with something that's. A little bit more friendly to everybody, including the admin staff, cuz just entering the data for these things takes some months. Once the, once it closes, we have to go in and enter all this data and then we go and we we share this data with the Rate Review Advisory Board. Committee, you know, so that they know how many are being used in their cities and so forth.
Cause I guess uh Whitstone is the one that's used the most.
The landfill?
Yeah, the landfill.
Most is, so Sierra Vista is actually. The biggest user and then Douglas.
And then Douglas.
Yep. Bisbee's is actually pretty high considering Bisbee's a much slower transfer station than Benson. But the W R L, you can see there's only seven percent of the vouchers go there. It's because it's pretty remote. You want your landfill out and away from the cities. And so I think people just don't wanna drive all the way to the landfill when they have the convenience of Sierra Vista or whatever.
And Douglas is getting that, that station seems so far out. Now it's right there.
Not so far out.
So far out anywhere.
So the notes I'm taking away from today, we'll talk, uh I'll give it Jackie on the asphalt thing. Probably do a little bit of research um and then also make connect, connections with Douglas.
And I, and I'll tell the mayor, you know. To, you know, make sure that his staff is gonna be ready to talk to you guys.
And you said they'll be open in a month or two?
I think, yeah, but obviously they'll be operating. Ready to go.
Okay. Yeah. Sounds good.
And and if um if he wanted to talk to you, I could give you his number.
Mm hmm.
Okay, I give him your number.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
And uh you know, like I said, we'll get, I'll get with Jackie and we'll just. We, I'm gonna wanna tour the plant anyway, you know, and I'm sure her group is gonna wanna go out there. Uh our highways, you know, leadership's gonna wanna go out there and check it out and so forth, so.
Good.
It'd be really good if we got to meet them all and then go out and do some kind of a tour there and.
Yeah, cuz you know, it always helps starting out to know what they need to do to be able to qualify and, you know. What quality their asphalt should be instead of just, you know, kind of doing it on their own. Well, that would be great.
You know, I was gonna ask a question, but when we were done and that was that uh I was gonna ask. Each one of you, if you've had any complaints about any of the things we've covered, that way it's something I can address before our next meeting.
We're not talking about county roads, right?
We're talking about roads, solid waste, fleet, anything.
I'm going out to see Rucker.
Okay.
One day. Cuz I had a lot of complaints about Rucker. Um middle March is always constant. I haven't heard from him for a while. Um so. Rucker's the big deal, you know, for for right now. That's where I'm getting the most complaints. And I guess one of the things. Wanted to ask you is how, do you require a certain amount of miles to be done when they're blading? Like, you know, I hear in the past, it's like ten miles and then they said that. It used to be done when you started, you would complete it, but sometimes. It's get started in three or four miles and it's, the people are pulled off to go do some nails and then they come back and they start it. And then it's almost like you have to restart again because. It it stopped again.
Okay, I don't know what specific road you're talking about, but I can tell you.
Rucker.
Rucker?
I think so.
I mean, sometimes we do go out and spot blade, especially during chip seal season, like if we have a whole chip seal going, we'll send guys out to spot blade, maybe the bad washboarded areas. But typically, no, we do hit those areas and we stay pretty consistent. I will say ten miles is not, that's not, that's a lot of road degrade in one day. That's usually, it's more like. Four, but it, what what varies and why we don't put a, we can't tell them, look, you guys have to blade four miles a day. Is because moisture content, utilities, uh.
Sure.
There's so many variables. We're hauling material right now to. Dronamo Trail?
Yeah.
Dronamo Trail, we're out on Dronamo Trail right now and we have to haul material out there because. We don't have enough material to pull a crown into the road anymore. We're, we're to a point where we just need material out there, so. We're trying to get our four percent back. You know, we get that crown right. We're doing the same thing on Turkey Creek. So there's roads out there that we have been putting material on. Dronamo Trail's an interesting one because a portion of that was maintained by a contractor while we were getting the border wall done. And so the county wasn't even on that road for a portion, like for a long time.
They did a lot of damage, didn't they? I mean, I just, you know, when I'm out in Milwaukee, I fly there in the morning, it's amazing how many trucks. Are those our trucks? They're not, right? I think it looked like our trucks. They're huge.
Uh so there's a lot of big truck tra, truck traffic. It's not ours, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is that having to do with what? Who's out there?
I'm not sure who's doing what out there.
There's a lot of big trucks, trailers.
I've been getting reports about a lot of trucks on that road, but I don't know what they're doing out there and we, we don't restrict them.
I know, but you know, it's, it's amazing how big they are and they're coming really fast. And I saw like probably four or five one time. I said, what the heck's going? It's like, what is being built out there? Cuz it's just, they're huge, you know, huge.
So our trucks are, I mean, you'll know our trucks. They have the emblem on the side or whatever, but we do haul material out there. We do also run a water truck once in a while when the roads are really dry. Again, another reason we don't just set a certain mileage for guys. Cuz when it's super dry, the blades just don't blade like it that they do when Mother Nature's our friend, you know, and those kinds of things, so.
How many blades do you have overall for the county?
I think there's, Joe, you know that answer? Is it twelve? Yeah, I think it's twelve.
So like now the Douglas yards, you know, is that being used or are you guys centralizing or?
The Douglas road yards used very much.
Very much.
Oh, yeah.
Alright. Um yeah, cuz I was just given, you know, maybe when we go to the work session, we can um you can provide like how many blades and how much staff is in each. Area like Douglas and, you know, our freedom and Bisbee.
We can do that. We can get your staffing levels and.
Yeah.
Equipment. They're pretty even. Uh Douglas does have a few more staff just because, and Bisbee does too, just because the areas are, you know, a little bigger.
Cuz I just, I think, you know, thinking is there's a lot of comment that there was more staff back in the past, there were more blades back in the past, so. Just be prepared for those questions when we do a work session and people, you know, come in to talk about it.
Sure. I have talked about staffing levels a little at our previous work session. Part of it was because uh we talked about the two hundred eighty five thousand limit. We, there was a time where uh highways was doing construction work and we were. Exceeding the amount, so we had to back down. We don't need staffing levels that high. We're not constructing, so maintenance we're doing, we're actually staffed pretty solid right now. I do keep an eye on that pretty close. Uh but there's, I think, ten vacancies roughly right now. I don't, I don't know that for sure, but I'll get that information for our work session.
And when we do the market value, do we do it on that too, right? I mean, do we do on every, but?
Every division in the.
Okay.
Every single one, yeah. It's, it's all tied to a market.
Okay, that's good to know, cuz I heard. That might be a problem is that. We don't pay enough and so we're losing a lot of people want to get a little bit of experience to.
We have, our turnover is very low.
Really?
Our problem is, is we had all these experienced guys here for thirty years and they retired and so we're starting over. You know, I've been here a long time, but. You know, we, we've got staff out there. There are blading roads that are in training right now.
Yeah.
They're all new.
I'm amazed how much experience it takes to actually. Takes a lot and you wouldn't, I didn't think that till I started realizing it.
And we do have a couple of experienced staff still here and we utilize them for training. Purposes. We've got a guy here that's been here, I think, twenty six or seven years. There's a couple like that and we bring them in for training on blades and stuff. So we try to get that experience passed down. And but our turnover is very low in highways. There really is.
Takes year, a couple of years, right, to get the amount of experience on blading?
Takes a couple of years and it takes even two or three years to get a road back in shape once it's been destroyed. So, yeah, it can take some time. I mean, you can do it if you throw all your efforts to one spot, but we have so many miles of road and so many residents, we try to spread it out a little bit. Alright. Any other questions? Listen. Alright, let's take a recess uh until, actually, let's adjourn this meeting. Next week, our next meeting is gonna be at two o'clock in this very same spot. Uh to have our belt control district work session. So let's adjourn. Thank you. See you in twelve minutes.